About our special education program here in our Washington County Public Schools. So, Dr. Pugh, Dr. Gladhill, I'll leave it up to you to introduce staff. A very good afternoon to everyone. I don't know, we may have other members sliding in here as time goes on. Here comes someone right now, so.
Okay.
Dr. Pugh, Dr. Gladhill?
Yes, thank you. So, we're here as a follow-up to a July presentation that we made regarding some of our special education programs. So, to start us out, we basically have serving 2,394 students with disabilities who have an individualized IEP, Individualized Education Program. Thirty-two of these students are at the Job Development Center and forty-seven are at Marshall Street School. There are an additional 225 students served with an Individualized Family Service Plan in the home prior to becoming school-aged. So, developing the IEP team is a true team process which includes parents, supporting agencies, and educators who collaboratively make those educational and placement decisions. You do have a handout that includes both the July presentation and then some supporting documentation to assist in your discussion that we'll be referring to throughout. Today, we have the leaders of each of the specialized programs here to share information and respond to any questions that you might have. So, if I could, the team will introduce themselves.
Dr. Gladhill, Director of Special Education.
Brenna Eichelberger, Supervisor of Special Education for Case Management and Compliance.
Dr. Patrick Grau, Board Certified Behavior Analyst.
Maryam Robbins, Coordinator of Special Education Programs and Itinerant Services.
Connie Hartman, Supervisor for District Programs.
And Sarah Stair, Coordinator at Marshall Street School Job Development Program and also our specialized programs across the county.
Good afternoon. We're happy to have the opportunity to talk to you, and we really want to have a discussion, answer any questions you have that might benefit you, stakeholders, staff, faculty, students. Beginning of the presentation, special education really starts when students are born because we offer services birth through the school year in which they turn 21, and that pretty much covers our child find processes. We're going to talk about refers from the hospital when the kids are actually born, and a lot of our refers mainly come from the school system when kids are experiencing difficulties. We work with them, our teachers are trained in interventions and intensive instruction, really targeting the kids' needs, skill gaps, deficits. We try to work towards making every student have progress. When that progress cannot proceed with what we're doing, that's when we start looking at other interfering factors. So, parents might refer for the child find process, school teams might team about kids and make that refer accordingly. So, to get an individualized education program after the referral process happens, you usually go forward to a meet, well, you go forward to a meeting and there's an assessment to talk about if you're eligible or not. And if you're eligible, you have to have a disability in one of 14 areas, and you have to recrow specially-designed instruction, which, there's a lot of terms in special education, so specially-designed instruction is pretty much when we're taking the content, methodology, and we're adapting it to meet student needs. We have to alter the way we present it, the length we present it, we have to go in more detail, small group instruction, whatever it takes to address the student with where they are. And that can be in reading, math, writing, socio-emotional supports, which is something we're seeing across the county, and we're really trying to work on getting in front of the needs of all students, not just special education students. So, as you can tell, special education is really heavily regulated, and in your handouts, I included a lot of the data that drives our services. So, if you look at Appendix B, that's pretty much an overview of our determination process, and it starts with our age birth to kindergarten, and that's on the front of that page. The back goes into our school age, three through 21, and there's a lot of different criteria they utilize to rank us. I'm happy to tell you that we meet requirements in all areas, and that is the highest level of support because if we were not meeting requirements, we could be in needs assistance, needs intervention, or need substantial intervention. But we do a really good job of meeting our kids' needs. So, if you flip to the next part of that on Appendix C, that is actually a progression of the intensity of our monitoring. Back in school fiscal year 2014, there was a lot of shaded areas, so that's how much they've increased the monitoring of special education. Everything in red is pretty much a new requirement they added. So, actually, last fiscal year was the first year that we had to really monitor the growth of the subgroup on our PERC exam, and we do that by grade level. And we do that across our grades, of course, three through eight and then the high school tested areas. So, then if you go to the next one in Appendix D, that is actually our outcomes on all of our indicators. And it's a long report card, takes a long time to go through, but you can look through that, and if you have questions, please let us know. And this is all actually public information through the IDA Report Card site that parents can see and compare districts and look at where everyone is at with it. So, performance for birth to kindergarten is actually in Appendix E. That's a separate area that they monitor us for our compliance and instruction. If you look at Indicator Three again, that's the one on birth report cards that really look at our instructional growth of our students. So, I'm going to go one more page in the appendix because that is another major area, and that is significant disproportionality. This is actually something new that was approved by the State Board of Education on May 22, 2018, and to effect June 18, 2018, starting with data from last school year and for this school year. And in that document, we really talk about a lot of areas we're looking at each score, and one of the areas that we're really looking at that's our greatest challenge is with our special education students who are placed inside separate schools and residential facilities. We, again, break all this data down by ethnic group, and we also look at each disability category within each of these areas as well. I would like to thank you for the two new teaching positions that were added to the budget this year because that really helped us to add additional programs and support, and actually, the location of all of those could be seen in Appendix G of the document, and it's broken out by grade level as well, and then we give you the number of programs at each level. That being said, all of this data, we take input from our Special Education Citizens' Advisory Committee and our local interagency, local interagency coordinating council to really see what student needs are, what input we're getting from the community. We hear it from stakeholders, local agencies, try to see what kids need and how we can best address it. So, just to make you aware, our next Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee is actually on October 17 from 6:30 to 8:00 at the Funks Town School for Early Childhood. And we're going to go through, and each program leader will now talk about programs that they oversee directly.
So, we as a department and, of course, as a district, have a commitment to ensuring that students with disabilities have equitable access to the curriculum so that they can make progress and be successful. So, how we do that is, what I'm going to do is call your attention to its Appendix H, Instructional Supports, and this outlines some of our best practices. So, in order to help students to make progress, we have a full continuum of services to address individual student needs, and we have a responsibility to ensure that we're doing this within the least restrictive environment, so our goal is always to keep students in the general education setting to the greatest extent possible and appropriate for each student. So, with that, we provide an integrated, multi-tiered system of support. So, at the bottom, that green section there, that's our biggest tier, and that's where most students fall, and that's good initial instruction, access to that curriculum for all students. Then there's some students, because of their more intense needs, they need more time, intensity, explicitness, or individualization of instruction. So, we can do that in the academic areas, looking at reading, writing, and mathematics, which, of course, then impacts across the curriculum, and we can also do that and should do that as needed for social, emotional, and behavioral reasons. So, that's our multi-tiered system of support, and with that, we provide strategically-targeted, specially-designed instruction that goes along with progress monitoring. So, the process for that is, the best process for that would be to first identify the student's needs and follow best practices for identifying students' needs because then that helps us to develop strategically-targeted goals within the context of the curriculum. How are we going to get them where we want them to go? So, based upon the needs, then we develop goals that are specific to the student, and then those goals help us to determine what do those services and supports need to look like. And that should be a collaborative process, and once we decide what those supports need to look like, we need to collaboratively implement and implement with fidelity. And as we're implementing them, we want to do progress monitoring to see, are the students making progress with those supports and services that we have in place, or do we need to make adjustments? So, that's why it's a cyclical process because it's ongoing. We're continuously identifying needs, monitoring to see if those things are successful, and then adjusting accordingly. With that, a big piece of specially-designed instruction is implementation of differentiated instruction and universal design for learning. So, universal design for learning, UDL down here, that's the proactive planning. That's setting up a classroom where all students can access. So, that might be physical design, making it sure that it's accessible for students who are in wheelchairs or who have limited mobility. It might be setting up the classroom so that the student with attention issues is sitting close to the center of instruction, so it's really designing an accessible classroom where all students can access the instruction. So, that's the proactive planning piece. And then we do differentiated instruction, which is the responsive adjustments. So, that's changing things accordingly according to students' needs. So, if we identify that a student has a need in an area, we would differentiate the instruction, maybe slow it down, go back to the foundational skills in an area in order to teach that student, so differentiate to make sure that those students have access. When you take those things in conjunction and put them together with the specially-designed, targeted instruction for students with disabilities, that's how we can provide that equitable curriculum access. And we try to do this to the greatest extent possible with special educators who have dual certification and/or content area certification because, of course, our goal is that the highest quality and qualified individuals are teaching our students who have the most significant needs. We also try to do this with positive and productive collaboration with common understandings. So, that means among the building team, both the general educators and the special educators, but it also means with parents, with the students when appropriate and possible, getting everybody on the same team, onboard with the same ideas so that we can move forward in a positive way because that collaboration is an absolutely critical piece. So, we do that through ongoing professional development, collaborative discussions supported by central office staff as needed, providing information to parents, and supporting students so that they can participate as well.
Behavioral supports focuses on modeling and teaching appropriate social and emotional skills in order to help students gain greater educational and emotional success. And so, to reach this, we use a number of different strategies, and so we use school-wide strategies, we use classroom management strategies, and then we use individualized strategies to promote that positive and teach that positive behavior. And so, what we've done is developed a continuum of positive behavioral supports, and that is found in Appendix J. And we developed, along with input from stakeholders, administrators, counseling, student services, teachers, and paraprofessionals to incorporate feedback so that the continuum of support is a usable and workable model to, in order to help support the students in developing those skills. Also, we've sought to provide timely, relevant, and current professional development for administrators, teachers, and paraprofessionals. This includes behavior management and crisis prevention through the use of Crisis Prevention Institute curriculum. And also, this past July, professional development was provided, which is Appendix J. And the focus of that professional development was supporting students with mental health needs. And so, the present, the training focused on childhood psychiatric disorders that may be common, that teachers and administrators may be supporting students, the impact of trauma, and concrete practical strategies to support students who may present with mental health needs. And then also, to meet new regulatory requirements that went into effect this summer, we implemented CPR, first aid, and trauma-informed training, and will continue to implement those in order to meet those new requirements.
Birth to kindergarten program is a program that supports our youngest learners and their families. We provide services to children that are birth through three in the home setting or wherever that young child might be. We also, as the child continues to grow, we move into toddlerhood, we start providing services within the community, different activities that they can participate in with peers without disabilities. As children reach their preschool age, then we're offering them preschool opportunities with opportunities to interact with their peers also. We receive services, or we begin services through a referral process. We get referrals from many community agencies, and that is very much like the special education child find referral process. It is interesting to note that the growth of referrals within our program has been related to the neonatal abstinence syndrome, known as NAS. And those are children that are born addicted to opiates. So, those children are receiving treatment because they have been actually born to a mother that was struggling with addictions, and that child demonstrates those addictions too. So, we've had a significant raise in our referral rate. Ten years ago, 3% of our referrals in the infant and toddler program were of children that were identified with neonatal abstinence syndrome. To date, 20% of our children are identified as children with NAS or neonatal abstinence syndrome. That's one in five of our referrals is a child that was addicted to an opiate when they came into this world. That does not include, that is opiates. That is just opiates. It does not include the children that may have also been exposed to other drugs or an opiate but did not need that medical intervention. So, they can be demonstrating some type of addiction, but it's not to the extent that they really require another medication to help them cope with the addiction. So, that has had a significant impact on our program and how we're providing services to children. We receive referrals from many different sources. Parents are about 30% of our referral sources. They identify a concern within their, with their child, and they reach out to us directly. 50% of our referrals are, a little bit over 50%, of our referrals are from the medical communities, so that may be hospitals, it could be NICUs, or it may be from that child's Children are referred for many different reasons, and they are deemed eligible because of different reasons also, whether it could be a developmental delay, they may have a speech delay, obviously, medical conditions that can allow them to be eligible. As you look at the chart, you can see the increase in our referrals as far as by the different eligibility criteria. The children that are captured in the developmental delay and the increase in that, we're suspecting two reasons. One is that those children may have been originally diagnosed as a child with neonatal abstinence syndrome, and they did not participate in the program, and they were re-refered. The other component that we are suspecting is a reason for that increase in the developmental delay category is that those are those children that were prenatally exposed to a drug or opiate and, but did not qualify under the neonatal abstinence syndrome. So, that's how those numbers are looking at this point.
What determines, you say some of them don't qualify. What's the separation for qualification and non-qualification?
There's actually a medical diagnosis, and in the hospital, there's a rating. So, in that NICU, when the children are born and they go into the clinic, or into the NICU, there's a rating scale that they give based on their respirations, based on their tone, based on the symptoms related to addiction, so.
Is that what they call that, Finnikin Scale or something?
Yes, yes.
I read about it once.
That's exactly what, and that's exactly what it is. So, a score of eight or above means that the child is going to be receiving a morphine of some type to help with the addiction. Less than that, they may be very close, and so, we know that closeness to that scale of score is also going to impact them, but it doesn't give them the medical criteria for the diagnosis.
But these kids feel affected by it, I mean, we're.
Exactly, and they are coming to us under that developmental delay, very much so. We're seeing those that happen.
And they're still very much involved in our birth to five program. They're just not identified in that source where we talked about going from 3% to 20%.
Exactly, so.
Another whole percentage of children that are obviously affected by some type of addiction may or may not be opioids.
Very much so, and.
Alcohol, could be other drugs, could be a lesser opioid addiction.
They are, we're capturing them in our atypical development, we're capturing them in our developmental delay score, so we are, they are getting referred. They're just not falling into that neo, neonatal abstinence syndrome category. As you look at this chart and the, whoops, the trends for referrals, you can see that we have increased from 19, or for fiscal year 2014 and fiscal year 2015, our numbers were pretty stable and static as far as the amounts of referrals, and then you can see the trend increasing as far as going from under 400 to nearly 500 referrals in that bridge of time for children. And I can tell you that the trend this year from when we started our fiscal year in July till now is going to be catching and passing last year's numbers for the referrals. We are already at record-high referrals for this first quarter of the year. So, we will continue to see increases in the need for the early intervention program. We have added a social worker to our team, and she is working very closely with our families where the child has been diagnosed with NAS, and we're hoping that having the social worker on staff will help us capture those families that are highly mobile or resistant to participation because of a perceived stigma related to their child having NAS. So, we're anticipating that are actually, our services will, not only are referrals going to go up, but also our opportunity to provide services directly to young children. The early intervention program, the team works to provide a collaborated services for children, and that means we work very closely with community agencies as well as public agencies and private agencies. Children from birth to 36 months of age receive their services on an Individualized Family Service Plan because the early intervention is very much focused on providing services not just to the child, but also to the family because we know that that family, they are the people who are going to be ongoing support for that child. And children birth to 36 months can be eligible for an IFSP because they have a medical condition such as a metabolic disorder, genetic disorder, or it might be, as I said, something related to an opiate addiction. So, another way that children can be eligible is if they demonstrate a 25% delay in any of the areas of development that we assess. And the state has established those to be, if there's a 25% delay in their skills versus their age related to cognitive skills, motor skills, social skills, adaptive skills, and adaptive skills are basically how we take care of ourselves. And for young children, that's can they eat, can they use a bottle, can they communicate their needs? Or, we have the children that often fall into atypical development, and those are the children that, when we score them on a test, they're going to score age-appropriate. But when we look at them, and often it's their social skills, they are not performing in any way what we would expect a child that was 36 months of age. So, that, those are the eligibility criteria for our youngest children. When children are receiving services on an IFSP at 36 months, we have to review, are they continuing to be eligible? Would they be eligible for an IEP? If they are, then the state has provided an option, and Maryland and Washington DC are the only two jurisdictions that provide what is called an extended option, where children up to their preschool year can stay within the IFSP process. At age four then, or at the age of entering preschool, then children must transfer to As you can see, we have a lot of different service providers providing services to children, and all of them are committed to providing family-focused intervention. Our staff strongly believe that what, the work that is done when children are very young is what will lay the foundation and support for them when, when those children reach adults. The newest member of our team, as I mentioned earlier, is our social worker, and we are really blessed to have her. She's doing a lot of legwork with our families that in the past were very difficult to find or very difficult to maintain a relationship with. She's going to the hospital before those babies are being discharged from the hospital. She is actually going to rehab centers where the parent, mother is receiving support for her addictions and being able to build a relationship that hopefully we will be able to sustain through that child's education process. We have lots of places that we provide services when children are very young. Our goal is to serve that child in the home, and when I say the home, I mean any home. It doesn't matter where they are. It can be downtown Hagerstown, it can be on the mountain tops or the ridges of Hancock or wherever. We go and meet the families where they are, and that was how early intervention started. Over the years, we've expanded. We have lots of, we call them times and play groups in our elementary schools where we meet briefly. We do home-based and center-based services. We have lots of partners within the community where we're utilizing their resources to provide services to our children. The highlighted areas in red are new this year, so we're starting some new groups in our partnership with Meritas Medical Center and providing services. In the NICU is a great partnership as well as Washington County Health Department where we are providing services and working closely with the addictions clinics. We have also many options for preschool services and early childhood services for our three-year-old programs and our four-year-old programs. I do want to highlight that the concept of ongoing parental support stays with our parents and our. parents and our children even though the students may be coming to school. Kids still get a home visit once a month. We also are inviting the parents of our three-year-olds to come to school once or twice a week and hang with the kids and be, continue to receive coaching on how to provide services for their children when their child is at home. We're also supporting children in the general education preschool classes and we are so grateful for all of the opportunities that we have for general ed preschool and our children to participate.
The summit programs provide therapeutic classrooms within our public schools for students whose social emotional needs exceed what can be provided in the general education setting. There's a low student to staff ratio to provide extra academic and therapeutic interventions. The summit classroom teacher is responsible for directing the academic interventions. This includes direct instruction and collaborating with general education teachers in the school. The licensed social worker provides and directs the therapeutic interventions, which is individualized for each student and can include individual, group, and family therapy in addition to crisis intervention and support as needed and linkages to outside agencies and other supports. Paraprofessionals support students both inside the summit classroom and outside the classroom as they begin to directly access general education. The summit programs are in line with Maryland State Department of Education's efforts to narrow the achievement gap for students with disabilities by providing access, equity, and the opportunity to progress in the general education classroom with non-disabled peers. Summit students have access to teachers who are highly qualified in their individual content areas. They have the ability to enroll in honors, merit, AP level classes, world languages, laboratory-based sciences, and an array of electives and career completers that aren't always available in more restrictive settings. Summit students play sports, they march in the band, they belong to clubs, organizations, they have the benefit of the social aspects of a public school, dances, pep rallies, assemblies, and can participate as part of a school community despite having an emotional disability. The summit program is designed to have flexible and fluid supports so the supports can intensify and decrease based on the needs of the student so that each student participating can maximize their opportunity to access general education and make progress in the general curriculum. Prior to August of 2009, when the summit programs were created and implemented, there were few placement options for students who required that small class size and additional supports. This chart illustrates Washington County Public Schools' progress in meeting the state performance plan indicator related to the number of students served in the most restrictive settings. Those settings include non-public schools such as Cedar Ridge and Laurel Hall, public separate day school, Marshall Street, and students served on home and hospital instruction. As you can see, Washington County Public Schools did not meet the indicator for two consecutive years, which resulted in a financial penalty. After implementation of the program, we were able to meet that target seven of the eight following years. Currently, summit classrooms are located in 11 schools, serving students from kindergarten through grade 12. Over half of students in the summit programs have either an emotional disability or an other health impairment, which is typically an attention deficit disorder. Additionally, at the elementary level, a small percentage of regular education students receive summit-level supports when in-school interventions have not been successful and they require a smaller, more therapeutic setting. Placement into the program for students with disabilities occurs through the district IEP process. Regular education students are referred by administrators and there's a referral process that goes with that as well. Each summit program has a licensed social worker and/or a board-certified behavior analyst. The licensed social worker provides services to students in the summit program, but is also a great resource for the entire school. Social workers will respond to any student who is experiencing an emotional crisis and requires a level of intervention or support. They routinely work with students outside of the summit program in individual, group, and family counseling sessions and provide families with linkages to outside agencies and supports. They frequently sit on student support team meetings to offer their level of expertise in helping students who are struggling. They also represent Washington County Public Schools in outside agency meetings like family involvement meetings and multidisciplinary meetings. They have provided trauma-informed intervention training to administrators, teachers, and paraprofessionals. In addition to the clinical services provided by summit program social workers, we also have three licensed clinical social workers who provide those same levels of supports to schools that do not house summit programs. The professional development also includes training in the evidence-based practice of crisis prevention intervention, which is commonly referred to as CPI. At the beginning of the year, we had a little over 400 Washington County staff members trained in crisis prevention intervention, which allowed each school to have crisis response teams when students require that level of intervention. We utilize a train-the-trainer model and have 17 trainers, 11 of whom are administrators. We have eight Washington County Public School administrators in eight different schools providing immediate job-embedded training to faculties so that they can appropriately respond to students who are receiving an emotion, who are experiencing, I'm sorry, an emotional crisis and working with students that can potentially become aggressive. We bring people in from the main headquarters of crisis prevention every summer to train new trainers as needed and to provide refresher courses so that we are offering that as an ongoing service.
Okay, so I'm going to have a chance to talk to you about a few of our other specialized programs. We'll start with our life skills programming, which supports our students who are on a certificate track. We'll talk about our structured transitional education program, which supports a need in our K to 2 population. And then finally, I'll talk about our reaching independence through structured environments program, which is a targeted program to support our students who are on the diploma track and who are also impacted by autism. So starting with life skills, so students who are accessing life skills programs are students who are alternatively assessed. I'll draw your attention to section K in your handout. And there is a really great resource, not only for our teachers and staff working with students, but also for our parents. Because we know that they need the information to be able to justify, you know, what should I expect to see from my child, what can they do, what do they know? So there it unpacks the instructional framework while also providing those additional resources that both teachers and parents can draw on to continue to support students. So students who are participating in those life skills programs are identified through the IEP team decision-making process. And there we're talking about programming that is focused on those functional academics. So those functional ELA and math activities that we know students need to be able to transfer those skills as well as those daily living skills to be able to function as independently as possible, as well as community-based opportunities. Because we know long, once we are finished and they've finished their schooling, it's all about being able to transfer those skills so that they can be productive citizens and be as independent as possible. Of course, there are also built-in supports within behavioral and other related services that students access in those programs. The next two programs I'll talk about are Marshall Street School and the Job Development Program. And so they are led under the direction of Principal Amy Norris and I have an opportunity to assist her there. And I'll tell you, it's a very near and dear place to my heart. It's our separate public day school. So our students who attend in Marshall Street School are students who are identified with a significant cognitive disability. They are students who are on a certificate track. And so, but due to significant communication, adaptive, and behavioral concerns, their needs cannot be met in that typical school. And so there we'll be, we're able to provide a self-contained setting where we can encourage, you know, continue to engage them in activities that are going to allow them to experience multiple learning activities and allow them to grow to their max potential. Next, we have the Job Development Program, which is also housed there in the Marshall Street complex. So our Job Development Program supports our students who have completed that four-year high school life skills program. So now we're looking at students who are ages, you know, 18 and 19 up until 21. And so now we're looking at providing them some additional services and supports to help make that transition into adulthood and support those job skills that we know they're going to need. Some of the highlights within that, we have a really great food service program, horticulture, woodworking, groundskeeping, you know, just really great opportunities for our students, not only there on the campus, but then within the community. I'm sure some of you have seen some of those students here at Central Office doing some various work tasks. So really just getting them in those social situations where we know they need to transfer those skills to be successful. So next is our STEP program, so our structured transitional education program. So this is a new program and again, a program that was identified through a collaborative effort and with your support. So we're very appreciative of that. And this is really targeted in a K to 2 population of students who may be developmentally delayed and also impacted with an intellectual disability as well as some significant behavioral concerns. So really providing them a self-contained setting that's going to allow us to really target that full-court press, both academically, behaviorally, to really allow them to access instruction and supports that we know they need to be successful at that young age. So finally, we have our RISE program, so our reaching independence through structured environments. Again, this is a program that's targeted to support our students who are on the diploma track and are impacted by autism. And so here, we're looking at programming in K to 2, 3 to 5. And again, additionally, this year with your support and through a collaborative effort, we were able to open up a new middle school program. So continuing to support those students as they progress through this year. So there, we're focusing on programming that really targets that communication, independence, those social skills for students to be able to generalize across environments. Our goal is ultimately to push them in on that diploma track, to push them into those gen ed classes with their gen ed peers with that support as well so that they can continue to make progress. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Gladhill.
At this time, you're welcome out questions you have and any discussions you'd like to have regarding our services.
Thank you. College questions?
I have a question about the RISE program. So in high school, if you have someone that has autism but is on a diploma track, do they not get the same support?
So that's a great question. I think when we look at, you know, any time we go through our programming and we're looking at, you know, each year we look at, okay, what are our needs? Where are our students, where are they at, and how can they be supported within those buildings? And so I think each year, as we sit down and we look at that, we've identified a population in that K to 2, 3 to 5, 6 to 8. But I think we've also identified a population in the high school. I don't think that at this time we'd identified that we needed a full-scale program because we've been able to go back to that IEP and really look at maximizing those services for students in their home school. And through that, we've been able to meet their needs and be able to provide them what they need. So it's, but it's something we always are continuing to look at.
Well, we have defined programs. We always look at how we can meet other kids' needs within the supports that the programs provide. A lot of times we might, we'll even help out kids that aren't even special education because we want to prevent disabilities and prevent that gap or deficit before they come to the table for special education.
And I think, excuse me, I think Mrs. Burry, to your question, last year, we didn't have the middle school program. So what we were seeing is an increased need of autism throughout our elementary grades and we continued to morph various programs to meet their needs. Then we saw an increased population moving into middle school and that's where the RISE program, actually, we've kind of renamed it, I guess, all the way down through elementary. But that's where we've addressed that just this past year in the middle school. Again, as Dr. Gladhill's pointed out, we've been addressing middle school and high school students with autism in different means, but not with specific programs. I think if we see an increased number of students that have the need to have a program, a specialized place to go, I think we would, you know, we would find the resources to consolidate that into a high school program if it was necessary. Right now, we are meeting their needs. We're not ignoring their needs. But the RISE program is something new that we're using to address middle school. Sorry, Connie.
No, you're good, Michael. I was just going to point out too that we have had, autism being such a spectrum disorder and with different presentations, go back to my visual, about 10 percent of our students in summit are autism. That's at the high school level, with students on the spectrum participating in summit as well with various supports. Programs for students who need that extra support as well as supporting.
How many, do we have a breakdown of how many kids are involved in each of these different programs and everything? I mean.
I can, if you want, I can jump in. I, so for life skills program, just because I finished up and I had my stuff right here. So for our life skills population, again, that K through 12, so separating from Marshall Street and Job Development Program, we're talking about 280 students who participate in life skills programs. That's again, across K to 12. And then at Marshall Street, we currently have 47 students and then in the Job Development Program, 32 students. And then additionally, within our RISE program, so again, the diploma-based.
Sarah, up to that would be non-diploma-bound students you just described.
Correct.
Right. Job development, maybe you've already been kind of what we call their graduation.
Correct.
Those students are non-diploma-bound, so some of the RISE students would be diploma-bound.
Right. So the RISE, then, the diploma-based programs, as we look at K through 8, we're talking about a total of 32 students.
So other programs, summit?
The summit program has currently 132 students, 47 elementary, 31 middle, and 54 high school students.
Can you give those again?
I'm sorry. It's 132 total. There's 47 elementary, 31 middle, and 54 high school.
Sarah, you want to share how many K to 5 students were served? I mean, birth?
250. IFSP, the individualized family service program, and that's ages three up to preschool. And then our preschool population is close to children that are on an IEP, 3 to 5. And that may be not only program students, but also children that are receiving. Well, for us, we give these people about 200. What was the number again for the ISFP? There's about 250 related that are receiving direct service.
How many kids do we think are, have gone non-identified or fallen through the cracks? Any idea? I mean.
Through the early intervention program, it's hard to guess. We see more children when they come to preschool or get into kindergarten. Often, that's when children. IFSP program is a volunteer program, so many of the children, and that is our hope with our social worker, that we will capture more of those families and not have them fall through the cracks. For many different reasons, not to access the services initially. And so we're hoping building the partnerships with those families early on, we'll be able to have those children unless we'll be falling through the cracks.
Population room's talking about, like, as if the hospital makes a referral and for whatever reason, the family may not want the supports at that time, then we're not able to go in and provide their supports.
And are we staffed well enough to handle all these things? And are we staffed well enough to handle all these things? I mean...
We provide services, we maximize the services with all of our staff. We maximize everything we can do with the staff we have, and any time we've had a need that we said was overcrowded, we've never been in a position where we couldn't add staff. We have various funding streams, and through the Board of Education supporting that, we were able to do that when there was a need. But of course, I mean, any time we have an extra hour or two on a teacher's hand, we're going to maximize all kids as much as we can.
Move forward those budget requests to Dr. Michael this year. He's asked for them.
That sounded very, very political.
Mary, I just wanted to ask you, I know that when children are born prematurely, is that a different program? Is that, that's birth through five? Is that, it's different from anything that we're speaking about?
They come to our program. They're referred to the hospital or the NICU. We get referrals from Johns Hopkins and Children's Hospital, often when the children are born as extreme premies and very low birth weights. We are now, they are medically able to sustain life at a very early age, when children are born at twenty-two, twenty-three weeks gestation and less than a pound of weight. So, those children obviously need a lot of intervention, and we're supporting those children once they are exiting their medical facilities, which is often, sometimes three, four, or five months they're in the hospital. And ironically, some of the children, when we get them, they are actually not at what should be their gestational age yet, and we're seeing them.
Not at their birth age yet.
Pardon me?
They're not at their equivalent birth age yet.
That would be correct. And so, we're adjusting for their age.
And your program, I can't say enough good about your program for several people, and I've never heard anything but good things about that program.
Thank you. That's good to hear. We're proud of what we do. Mary, I know you had a question.
Yes, just real quickly, you mentioned, pardon me, you mentioned how students in the Summit program are provided with AP and other honors-type programs and honors-type coursework. How do you pull that off? How do you get them out of, are they put into the regular classroom?
Yes. Each student has sort of an individual plan for that. Typically, when students first arrive, they're generally self-contained in the Summit classroom until we get a handle on what behavioral and academic supports they're going to need. And then, we begin to gradually push them out into general education. We typically look at what are their strengths. So, for example, if a student is very strong in math, then that's probably going to be the first class that we try to push them out into with support, and then we'll fade that support back. If that goes well, we'll add maybe an ELA class and get them up into, hopefully, they can be out the majority of their day. Each student is different. Once they have a level of support, some Summit students are served by checking in in the morning, and then they go about a regular course schedule, which that can include AP level, honors, merit. One young man who took Russian at North High and excelled and would come in every morning to the Summit teacher and recite the entire Russian alphabet. That was actually a student with autism as well, who did amazing in our program. So, it's about access. It's about providing them an opportunity to be within the school building so that when they are able, they have the same opportunities to get excellent initial instruction from our teachers.
What type of support are you saying would be available to them as they move into one of those classrooms?
Generally, the paraprofessionals that are assigned to the program will support them, or they go into a class that is already supported by a building paraprofessional or maybe a special ed content teacher. But we, success will breed success, so we don't want to put them in a position of too much too soon, so we're very thoughtful about that. And we work very closely with the general education teacher who is about to receive the student, so that he or she is aware of the behavior intervention plan, of how to access supports. Sometimes, we try it, and it's too much, and we pull back. And sometimes, we try it, and we can very quickly fade. I have some students who will go into class, and the paraprofessional will walk by and catch the teacher's eye, thumb up, thumb down, and if thumbs up, they keep walking because they have built that level of independence. So, they're designed to be fluid and flexible to meet needs.
You mentioned one other thing about social workers that you're utilizing
Yes.
in the Summit program. You said there's a social worker, and I can't, specific, that offers timely support.
Yes. Every Summit program, the staffing pattern for the Summit programs is that every Summit program has a licensed social worker that's attached to the program, and that person works with the Summit students, provides individual therapy, group therapy, crisis intervention support.
When?
But they also provide support to the host school. So, for example, North Hagerstown High School has a Summit program. The social worker there, Ms. Sharkey, does an amazing job, and if a student is having an emotional crisis, the administration can call her. She will respond. Does not have to be a Summit student.
Is she there?
Absolutely, every single day.
So, every one of our high school social, or high school Summit programs has a social worker in school?
Every Summit program, K through twelve, has a dedicated full-time social worker, yes. The clinical services, I've been ten years in the district now, and when I came, we had, we had just got two itinerant social workers. We are up to a clinical team of fifteen, and that's through generous support of the board, absolutely. We have risen to meet the increasing needs of the mental health if our students are presenting. It has grown exponentially. Didn't happen overnight. We started with five in two thousand nine, and now, we're up to seventeen. So, you know, we are expanding and doing what we need to do, but the access is so critical for these students that they have the same opportunities to do all of the things that are part of our wonderful schools.
I have a question or two for Dr. Pew and Dr. Gladhill. Not long ago, we had a presentation to the board out of Park Scores. They're up for all groups. And this evening, we're going to be taking a look at the update to the master plan. So, as I was reading the master plan, I noticed that even though we are up with those groups, and a rising tide lifts all ships, and that's a very good thing, and we're very appreciative of that upward movement, that achievement gap, nothing is coming down, it's increasing to about thirty percent, I think, somewhere around there. So, my question to you is, what is it that you need? What is it that we can be doing as a board? What should we be looking at to make a difference, to be able to close that achievement gap? And maybe not just the achievement gap, but the opportunity gap as well?
That's, that's a great question.
Hey, thank you. I'm eager to hear your answer. I'm sure it'd be great.
Well, we, we've taken several layers of approaches. First, obviously, is access to our excellent teachers. They, they provide the best instruction first. But then, it's been a year of growing and learning and working with Brenna on the specially-designed instruction and exactly what that means and what that looks like, so that in classes, teachers can feel confident that they have the strategies to work with providing access to the general education curriculum, which is different. It's different than models previously where a student was pulled out, and the student went somewhere else and got something else and came back, because that model didn't work either. We did not have success with that level of support. We're finding that working together with the English department and the mathematics department and determining, helping the teachers to determine what parts of what interventions are best for individual kids through a customized learning plan, using a lot of data and monitoring their progress to see if they're moving forward, and if they're not, we change it. So, it's not a one-size-fits-all. It's very complex, but it's also a way of helping our teachers and our special educators work together to communicate about what the needs are, and it's a shared approach versus a, they're going somewhere else to get this. So, it's much more complex, but in the long term, we feel that helping us have time with both educators and case managers and special educators to provide, continue to provide professional development, which is critical, where they get to think about, the depth of the standards has increased, the needs of the students are various, how do I do that? And what does that look like in an actual classroom? So, more professional development, I would say, continued support.
Dr. Pew, and I appreciate that, and professional development is a wonderful thing. But when you have classroom teachers who have responsibility for implementing IEPs, and they're doing, I hear what you're saying about collaborating with the special ed teachers. So, we have that collaboration. So, you have classroom teachers who have IEPs, and some of them may have a dozen, I'm imagining, to implement, BIPs, Behavior Plans, as well. That's a lot on a classroom teacher. And when we have classes of twenty-five, thirty, you know, professional development is good, but what other kinds of support can we give these people who are on the front lines, giving their best, giving their all, day after day, implementing these plans? That, you know, do they need more time? Do they need some other kinds of materials? Do they need additional support, whether it be social workers or specialists that can assist them? You know, we talk about budget, but we have to know what the needs are to make a difference with our students and be realistic about what those needs are. So, what can you tell me?
We would also say that the mental health needs continue to increase. Even though the program has grown exponentially, Maryam really wants another social worker.
Maryam wants another social worker.
She does. And, and, and so, you know, we try to look at the programs and the services, what we need to expand, what's working, what's not working, where are we not meeting the needs of teachers and our responsiveness? You know, more people doesn't necessarily fix, fix it either, because it's still an issue of trying to have equitable access. But I do think, you know, providing that time where teachers can work together to plan, to monitor progress of kids, additional resources, behavior intervention people who can come out. I mean, when Patrick goes out to the schools and works with the school team, who is in crisis because of the behaviors maybe are, are things that they've never seen, he can calmly walk them through a process and give them strategies, and often, our teachers just want to know, how do I do this? What, what, what is it that I should do? So, continuing to support with time, specialists who have the certification, who can, who can help teams really problem solve.
And what we're also doing with the literacy coordinators, we've developed communities of practice, especially across middle schools, and specifically, that was just this past week at Western Heights, last week, I guess it was. And we're trying to really define what it is that's working, how can we emulate that, what other supports can be put in place, and have teachers really come to the table and talk about it themselves and collaborate together, because that's extra time in addition to the day that they can do that, and we can share those best practices. I was out at a high school the week before, where there was a team coming together, talked about how are we going to schedule our kids to meet these needs? I mean, the teachers are extremely invested about how we can do that, and we talked about having Dr. Grablin come out and support that, and we were talking about even non-special education students, getting to what can we do for kids before they become special education for our kids? I mean, we're all in this together, and we're just trying to look at all the resources and how we can braid them to really get to where we're going at. We are looking at even putting in place like a, we developed this like kind of today, yesterday, talking about how can we do more behavior training for teachers after school? So, we're talking about doing a social-emotional competency kind of curriculum with five courses throughout the year that we can have our staff come in and participate within a couple of weeks, hours during the week. So, and if you have any suggestions you're hearing from stakeholders as well, I mean, we're open to hearing that as well.
You know, I think we've, you know, we're, we're in a situation where we're having increasing challenges. This is not getting easier, this is getting more challenging. We're a reflection of our community, you know, for good or for bad, it's just the truth. You know, I've heard we have seventeen social workers. We didn't have a need for seventeen social workers ten years ago. We probably needed more than two itinerant, but we didn't have a need for seventeen social workers ten years ago. For whatever reason, now, we do. And we need to continue to address it with resources. I think what we're going to see in the achievement gap, I don't think we're going to meet the measurements that the state's expecting us to equally keep this gap closing. I think what's going to happen first, I think we will continue to have success with non-special ed children. We have a significant number of children that do not have academic challenges that aren't being successful, so I think we're going to see those children achieve first. I do think what we are seeing in some of the data, we're seeing a lot of our students start to move from ones to twos, twos to threes on the park exam. That's not reflecting in passing scores, but it is reflecting in success for the student and for the efforts of our teachers. You know, our teachers are obviously experienced, and the board members have heard it. You know, a second-grade child that's kicked, bit, you know, spit whatever on their teacher, that, those are behaviors that we did not have in Washington County not just too many years ago, and it's, I won't say it's common, but it happens, and it happens with some frequency. Those are things that we do not solve easily, and the passion of these people and the work that they do, and the work that our staff's doing, including our frontline teachers, our just regular classroom teachers, they feel like, that's not what I went to school to be trained for. Some of our senior staff that have been through experiences long enough, this, again, my fortieth year, we didn't have these discussions at one point. But it's not like these kids were somewhere else. We have more students with greater needs. So, I appreciate the passion of the team. We just need to continue to work on things. People are looking for quick and easy solutions. They don't exist. Shipping these kids off somewhere, if they were your child, you wouldn't want that to happen to them, if indeed, we could meet the need. There's not a special place that I'm aware of that addresses their academic needs. There are specialized programs that can address their mental needs, maybe even possibly their physical needs, although I think Marshall Street does an amazing job meeting our medically fragile children's needs. We're doing great things with students that are, you know, wheelchair-bound and have difficulties like that in regular classrooms, but this is a real challenge, and not every community's experiencing this, but Washington County's experiencing this, and it's growing exponentially. We need, and we were fortunate to add some resources. Dr. Greveland wasn't part of our staff here a few years ago, or wasn't in this capacity, and we're fortunate to have him. We're fortunate, we were able to add two special ed teachers. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to continue to add resources, the special ed, the growing, little different topic, but the growing EL population, also, some of those children, you know, our English learners, have special ed needs on top of the inability to speak English initially. I am hearing from our pre-K programs how successful some of our EL population entering as four-year-olds and exiting as five-year-olds have, have mastered the English language to a five-year-old's ability. So, that's a huge success coming out of our pre-K program for those students, but there are many of those students that have special needs. We have many children that enter EL populations, twelve, thirteen, fourteen years old, that have had no formalized education. Some of those children are identified as special needs on top of not having formal education. All this is new territory for Washington County in the last five years, growing in the last ten years, newer territory in the last five years. Am I describing that correctly?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, we need, we need support. I thought we made a convincing case last year locally. I was disappointed, I continue to be disappointed, that we did not receive the local support that we needed. And the community locally needs to recognize that we need to address our population. We have a passion to teach every child that comes through our door. We're not judging anything about our children. We're going to try to meet their needs. We also have a passion to protect every child in our building and to address their needs. Their education should not be disrupted by somebody else's challenges, at the same time, we have to balance all those needs. So, I, I think it's a real concern of ours, and we're right there with you. It's not, we're, this, this group is not trying to paint a rosy picture that we have as conquered, same time, we're not giving up.
I didn't get that impression.
No, no, I'm sure you didn't.
But I do want us to be very, very realistic about what our needs are, so that we can present those needs and make sure that we are doing the best we can for all students. The State Board of Education is going to be working and is working currently, I believe, on an equity policy, and, you know, there's...
Some of those things, I mean, they're, they're artificial.
We're ahead of our time, I know, in many respects, but I know that we have a lot of, a lot of work to be done, and it's going to take some financial support, and I just want us to be very realistic about what our needs are, to do the best that we can do for all of our kids, all of them. Mr. Stuffer, you had something that you wanted to say.
I'll put it in the notes, Dr. Michael.
Oh, you did?
No, I will.
Oh, you will?
Is that a good thing or a bad?
You don't want to share with us, or you'll copy with all of us?
I'll just put it in the notes.
Oh, okay.
Anyone else have a question or comment, concern? We've gone a little bit over the time we had...
We've gone a little bit over the time we had allocated. Thank you all so very much for coming and sharing information with us today. And it may be that we'll invite you all back as we see that we have additional needs for information and questions to ask. So thank you for the afternoon.
Thank you.